They stop.
From the third street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Music.
I did see that the um. The youth orchestra has been playing.
They're on stage.
Yes, um, both Lori and I have performed every year.
All right.
Cause this is their last year of it.
At least for Paco to lead it.
Oh.
And I want to see each other. Yeah.
Get to him.
So to be in the middle of everything, I need to get in around five thirds, right?
Sure.
And I'll just pass on the face paint.
No, I would love to see you in a full face paint. How do you look?
Yeah, we tried that too.
Very good.
You dressed for ages.
Oh.
I didn't have my.
Yes.
I wonder when those food truck thing is gonna open.
It's been quite a long time.
Alrighty. Alrighty. So we have Julie, Leshia, Frank and Brian here, and I believe Lori is here via Zoom. She's muted. Hi Lori. Um, so first item is the approval of the September third minutes. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Perfect, thank you. Alright, and then public comment. Nobody here. So then jumping into our first action item is the twenty twenty-five budget. So this is our budget that we get every year from the town, and it goes, it's like a use it or lose it. And so that's at the last page of this packet. And you can see, you know, all the withdrawals, the the bank reimbursements for the credit card charges, and then at the bottom, it does say that we've overdrawn, but it's because of that damaged sculpture that happened. Uh, the ceramic piece in front of the frame shop. And so the town is actually gonna cover that for us, so we're gonna ultimately have a remaining balance of one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-two cents. So with this action item, I wanna figure out how we want to spend that money so that we don't just lose it. Um, and in doing so, I think that we should hold on to about three hundred of it. So if we just say a thousand dollars, the three hundred is to capture cafe costs for it to be published. So really, we have about a thousand dollars that we can allocate towards what I would like to propose as an audio system for the art walk. So that being said, does anyone have any questions about the ledger as it stands before I dive into how we can spend that money?
No. I like your idea.
Okay, great.
Hello?
You do that all right?
Boom, I can hit. So then I have, I printed off this other sheet for us, and it is the budget over, it's the two proposed audio systems for us. Um, one of which is the Mackie Thump. It's a portable speaker, so there's two ultimately portable speakers. They're very similar in my mind. Uh, one is four hundred and sixty dollars, the other is seven hundred dollars, and so this is kind of what we need to decide between. I did type it into ChatGPT to give us some key differences. And now that Ross is here, we can, yes. Cause I did send both of these to both Ross and Brian to get their feedback as our musical outlet here at CPAC. Um, and so just, I thought some of the larger components that it emphasized was obviously the cost. Um, the battery life, they're very comparable. You can, it's a removable battery so that we can, you know, take it out, plug it in, and then bring it back. We don't have to wheel it up to the wall. And that they're pretty comparable in weight also. So the Mackie is seventeen point six pounds, and the Bose is fourteen and a half pounds. Neither of them have wheels on them. So again, I think we would do what we did previous year was bring a, like a little cart and tote it around with us. This also doesn't include a microphone or the adapter for the microphone, and that's on the second page of that is an estimated cost. I believe all in the Mackie Thump is like seven ten, seven hundred and ten dollars, and the Bose is eight hundred and fifty for the speaker, the microphone and the transmitter. If we went with the Bose, that would use up about all of our thousand dollars that we have, especially with shipping it and getting it here. Um, if we did the Mackie Thump, it would, we would have a little bit more money that we could then allocate towards something else. Which, I think one option, if we did move forward with that, is to donate some of that money towards the luminaries project. I talked to Michael briefly. This is the last component of all of it. Um, so he asked if we would like to participate. One avenue is that we can just go and reuse what we already used last year and just set out the lanterns. Cause he has all of those in storage. We could do a small workshop where there are extra bags and extra candles, but it's not the same quantity that it was last year. And we'd be responsible for setting up, cleaning up, and that workshop at the launch pad. Or we could donate additional funds to it to bolster that. Again, so there's kind of one avenue, which is the Bose, where we spend all of our thousand dollars towards that. And the second avenue is this Mackie Thump. A little bit less, and then we could donate the rest of our money to the luminaries project at Carbondale Arts. So any thoughts, any questions?
I wanna defer to the music.
Oh, I.
And either one of those is gonna be a huge improvement over what would like. Given the effort involved in trying to acquire the, that, that one, I, for some reason, expected a much better. A bigger value, yeah. That was um, like a one step above an easy bake oven. Um, and so either one of these will be great and a big improvement, and, you know, we can be very nice and kind and generous to other people who might need it. I can, I can imagine plenty of situations where someone wants to be outside for some purpose, and it makes sense. So I think, um, either one is fine, really.
Or are you, where it's gonna be, um, you know, people
Yeah.
highly close to us, it'll do just fine.
Either one of these. Yeah, yeah, I think so. Yeah, save, save, I mean, I think that's great.
And one note is Lori will store at Public Works for us. So, it's just another, Frank.
I think, I don't know if it gets down to the microphone quality being the biggest issue. Cause I know like the one we use, you had to hold your mouth really, had to hold it really close to your mouth.
Yeah, this, we can.
And I don't know if, it says here on the the Bose, you could get optional wireless transmitters. I don't know if this is a wireless. Um, you know, as we're dragging this thing around, you don't, you're not dragging a cord around with you. Not as, you know, the speaker speaks and then hands it to the artist. I don't know if we could have, do we have just one mic in the budget, or is there?
I mean, I, both of these, and I'll, I can, I can triple check again, but I think both of these take a standard mic and XLR connection, so I can, we can play around with ones, mics that I already have. Like, just to make sure it's all fine before we buy something out there. Yeah.
Buy another Bluetooth?
Yeah, yeah.
I had one plus to going with the cheaper one is then we have extra money for the other parts, yeah?
Yeah.
You would have to be pretty quick that we would have to decide, because we have to use it before December. So if we could order it right away, get it in, test it, and order the additional parts before December, perfect.
I think a wireless bike, if, even if it's a handheld, not a lapel, but a wireless, the speaker could hand it to the artist. If someone in the audience has a question or near, near enough, we could just, you know, one of us could run over and stick it in their face, hey, ask your question. Wireless would be best all around, I think.
I've, I've had, I mean, I in terms of just like literally plug and play, plug, plug it and cord it in is, is an easier option, like a more reliable option, um, and I I would almost suggest doing that before trying to get the, like a wireless, I don't, I don't know enough about which transceiver and receivers are best and which are not. And so I've, I've had experiences with with ones that are not, and I, and I wonder whether that just needs a little more research, just to make, to make sure that we can do it. I mean, if we're pretty close to that thing and have a fifteen foot cord, there's, it's solid stuff. What we were playing with before was just like.
Yeah, wasn't quite up to stuff.
Um, but I don't, but, but it's worth looking at for sure, and I, I don't mind taking a quick look at a wireless thing that might make sense. I mean,
Yeah.
I, yeah.
Um, I, I, I'm gonna go the opposite and just say I'd rather invest in a better system. If I, if I look and it says that the Bose is better for clarity and versatility, I, I mean, we're not gonna we're not gonna buy another one of these for a long time. So, so, I mean, if we think that the Bose is a better option to make an investment, that would be my only vote as to, y- you know, they have some luminaries, they have some things that they can use. I, I don't wanna sacrifice getting a good system because we wanna save some money, some money for the luminary project, so.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm remodeling my house right now, and I'm like, I'm never gonna do this again, so I'm doing it right, you know, so. So that would be my two cents. We, if we have the money, let's put it to good use.
Yeah, and I mean, from just some very preliminary research, Bose definitely has like that household name brand associated with it. So I don't know, I could also look into, like, maybe they have a better warranty system, or they have, you know, a longer customer service, some things like that, which is being around longer in addition to what Leshia was saying. We could have these other perks with buying a larger brand.
I mean, the Mackie has a good thump, but we don't need that. Just saying. Unless we're gonna put some background music to this.
Right.
So at this time.
So, um, and, and yeah, I think the whole issue with the wireless versus the cord, we may be able to find something a little more streamlined to carry the speaker around in, you know what I mean? Maybe not a big unwieldy wagon, but, you know, just, we could try to finagle something where it's or I'm thinking like, are those shopping cart things, you know? So anyway, there's, there's different things to do, but.
I don't know, whatever people think. I just think the wireless is so much. If Brian, whoever's in that, or Michelle's the announcer, and they get away from the speaker, need to round up people, hey, we're crossing the street here, and they're thirty feet away. You know, the cord just limits, you gotta stick near this thing, and, so I don't know, I just.
And that, on that second page, the eight fifty is like an all-in cost for the speaker, the transmitter and one microphone. So that eight fifty is. Yeah. Yeah, and I maybe we start there. I can triple check on how many microphones can be linked up to it. I would think more than one, but we could start with one.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Start with one, and then add.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. So should we put it to a vote?
Yes.
I can never remember the exact words.
I would just say, since you're not like a hundred percenter of the final, like the total, I would just say, um, motion to allocate up to one thousand dollars on the portable system, and then whatever comes in with that, and then obviously if you have more, you can decide to donate that too.
Thank you, Ally.
Yeah, what she said.
Yeah.
Motion.
Motion to allocate a thousand dollars to a portable art.
I'd like to make a motion that we allocate a thousand dollars from the twenty twenty-five budget for a portable s- uh, sound system to use on our art walks.
I second.
Thank you. Perfect. We're gonna proceed with the Bose.
Put it in. Yeah.
Alright. What did you do? And, all in favor? Sorry. All in favor? Aye.
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 Maybe a wagons in next year, cause we used it at the luminary too. We actually had two wagons, one on either side of the street to haul all the stuff and set it up, so. Maybe two wagons next year and a donkey to pull them.
We'll just get a bullhorn for the back.
Okay, so before we move on to the information items, to close out the luminaries, do we as CPAC want to participate in the winter Ozanzo, um, with Carbondale Arts in the capacity of, we go, we set up the old luminaries, and we have a small workshop of the existing. I'll have to get with, um, them just to make sure, Michael, that we can, to see what quantity we have, and then take down. Is that something that we can volunteer? It's on December twentieth.
December twenty?
Yes.
It's not First Friday, right?
I'm not gonna be here.
So it's not ahead of light up Carbondale?
Hey, no, let me pull it up.
December fifth, I think.
Yeah, Saturday, December twentieth.
I think this is their way to try to bring people back downtown besides First Fridays, you know, cause I believe the shops are open late and restaurants, so.
Yeah, it says, local businesses are encouraged to participate by offering special sales, drinks or dinner specials, host an artist pop-up, trunk show, live music or creative activity. And we, I will do this, is we just have to tell them if we wanna participate or not by, I think it says Nov- November eighteenth. So we have to decide today if we wanna do it, so I can let Michael know. Chris won't be here, so she's out. Julie, Leshia, Frank.
I'm happy to volunteer again.
Yeah, I can do it.
You'll volunteer your wife, is that what you said?
I will be there too. Okay, I'll let him know. And I will get more details of what that entails for us.
And I'll have to find the wagons, Frank.
Wrote one last year.
Okay. So moving on to our information, we have the Insana cycle. So, I thought that we could my understanding is that there hasn't been any contact from Nancy to Lori about next steps, and we're really waiting on her to continue to accept the donation. And so Lori's side is kinda, it's, we're just waiting. And so what I wanted to do today is to kind of set a template or rubric to say, okay, how long do we want to continue with the Insana cycle process? And I know, and I looked back. I think we started it in May, so it's been a long time. Um, and I think that I don't know if we wanna set a deadline, that if it's not done by December thirty-first, that we kinda let it go, or if we wanna January thirty-first or something so that we can either have it move forward, or it's just, okay, we're gonna be done with it.
And, and part of that is also because we've committed funds to it, right? So that can help us free up funds for other projects if necessary.
Yeah, so currently, we, out of our one percent fund, we agree that we would have, I believe, ten thousand allocated from our budget for the move of the sculpture to Carbondale, setting it up, making sure that there's a base set in place. So really, we've kind of earmarked that money specifically for Insana cycle. Out of, I think we have thirty-five thousand based off of a couple of the sales that have happened over the last month or two. And so essentially, how long do we wanna hold that earmark for those funds towards the Insana cycle? And also do we wanna set checkpoints where maybe we have Lori or Frank or myself reach out to Nancy and say, maybe we talk to her, or we send her an email November fifteenth, and we say, hey, we wanna touch base. How do we get this moving forward? So we can either have a path to move it forward to get it here, or we can have a path to just close it.
And what was the last contact with her?
I'm not sure, but it was before our last meeting in September. Lori hadn't heard from her.
But it seems like if we're just waiting to hear from her, we contact her.
Yeah, so we could reach out.
Has someone made, like, made the very clear case that like, and addressed her concerns, like, that the fact that, if, if the concern was, um, the, uh, estimate of, you know, price, um, appraisal, that's the word I'm looking for, that, that if her concern was that, that, that actually, like, in the whole scheme of things, it's better, it's better that there's, like, for the value of the art itself, one, that that, that that was not our opinion of it, that doesn't reflect our opinion of it whatsoever, um, but that we have to do that for legal reasons, and two, that, that if, if the concern is the value of the art, it's better to have, I mean, there's, there's value in having art in a public, a respected sort of public, public collection, um, which we certainly aim to have. And I just wanna make sure that that message gets to her, and, or, and maybe someone more plugged into the art world can make it better than make that case better than I can, but that's, that's sort of, I think would be the case that I would make. Um, and, and, like, very sincerely, that there's a lot of interest. You know, we're bummed.
But at the same time, there is a, a desire and a need to bring it to closure. Whether it's Carbondale, and, and I would think that if we did reach out to her and articulate some of what you're talking about, Ross, she would, she probably knows what she wants to do or is able to do. And give us an answer.
Mm-hmm. I'm happy to send that. I haven't contacted her directly in a while. I was just helping with the plaque and making sure that, that verbiage was what we wanted, what she wanted, um, so I can reach back out and articulate all of those things. But I think we also need to set a deadline internally.
So, but, may I ask what the impasse is right now? Just, we don't have the legal documentation behind the donate, the donating.
So, can I interject? Um, because I've been the one that's been communicating with her. The town attorney has attempted many times to revise the town contract um, to make it suitable for her. Um, the last one we did was very stripped down, just very basic. Um, there wasn't any, no appraisal in that contract. There was, there was really virtually nothing. She just had to sign it and send it back. The problem has been she's always recreating that document based on what she wants to see in it. And, um, you know, you know, I'm just the mi- the middle man for the town attorney to her, but, you know, the town has certain, you know, basic standards they have to have in a contract. It was very simple, and even accepted the signed William Murrow contract from March or whatever. Um, so there's been a lot of, you know, movement and give and take on it, but she just insists on doing her own documents. And so that's probably not gonna move forward for the town. Um, so a lot of time and energy and money has been spent on it. So at this point, the ball has been in her court for a couple of months, and my opinion is to let it lie, um, until she's ready to deal with it. And that may or may not happen, but I'm not sure that, um, representing that we can make changes to accommodate some of those requests is gonna happen.
Lori, what, what were some of those requests? I'm, I, I we're kind of speaking in generalities here, and I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm curious what, what, what she's been asking that's, that are sticking points.
Well, basically, she just rewrote the whole kind of donation contract, and kind of regurgitated a lot of what the town attorney had put into it. Um, you know, and then she wanted to, to change it to the William Murrow legacy. Well, the attorney has a question, what's the legacy? That's new verbiage. We haven't heard that before. So I mean, without going into all the details right now, and I don't have that information in front of me, I don't wanna like go down the rabbit hole, but there's just certain things that she wanted to put into it that legally weren't gonna fly.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I think, I mean, I think, I think the enthusiast, the, certainly the initial enthusiasm, um, from the board is, I mean, maybe I'm speaking for myself or slightly out of turn, is enough, and certainly from the community, uh, is enough that it's worthwhile to not let, to not necessarily let someone who's not the artist, uh, Nancy sort of scuttle the whole thing if we can, if we can, you know, do, do some things that make, make it possible. Um, and I would certainly be, you know, I'd love to know, know what those, those sticking points are, and if it's, if it's a matter of um, a name here or there, then I'm, I think we can, we can move that along. Um, the board certainly, you know, was interested in, in, in helping it move along, and um, I'd hate to see it go away if it's not, uh, you know, for, for something that's sort of more technical than, um, than fundamental to like the whole process.
So I think in terms of next steps, then would I'm just trying to think of it, is to go back, see what those sticking points are. If we can work with her on those or not. And maybe Lori is just having you pull those things together for us so that we can see it and talk about it, and say, and then if you're like, oh, this is a hard line by the town attorney, then that's a hard line. And, but for us, just to have a better understanding of what those are, and then we can, I, we can talk about it in December, and that can be a big focal point of our December meeting is to really, how are we gonna move this forward or backwards, or not backwards, but at a standstill? Does that sound? Okay.
I will, um, I'll try to put something together all, in conjunction with Kevin, and and kind of see if we can bullet point it or something is kind of what's going on. Um, and let you guys look at it.
Perfect, thank you.
Would it make any sense for me to contact her? I mean, I got this string of emails going back, last one, September tenth. Um, her thoughts that I think she's sent to Lori, I think. Um, I, I don't know, I'd have to read them all again. I don't know what. But is it worth me contacting her? Is it worth me going to rifle and having coffee with her and sitting down, and if someone wants to join me? I don't know.
Maybe what we do is we start with Lori's bullet point list. We figure out what is a no-go and what we can finagle a little bit, and then we talk to her about it and say, these are our hard ones that we can't work with, these are the ones that we can. And maybe it's a conversation in person to talk through those. Um, but I also wanna be mindful that we as CPAC members aren't agreeing to things that will never work for the town attorney. In a sense, I just wanna make sure that we're.
I think that makes sense. I think that makes sense. And it makes sense certainly to, yeah, that's, I think that's the proper sequence.
Okay.
For sure. They can have a conversation. And if it works, great. If it doesn't, at least we know very clearly what, what the, what the sticking points are for the next time. I mean, I mean, there's, it's not that this is may, this may be some, some sort of precedent. I could see it happening again. And better to have had some experience and understand what those are, I think.
I agree. And good to know what the town is looking for when we accept a donation, right? So kind of know what the parameters are.
Yep, okay. All right, that's the Insana Cycle.
And I sort of agree, we should just, there should be an end boy where we just stop talking about it, stop working on it. Stop thinking about it and go, we tried, but it didn't work.
And then maybe she has, if she wants to reach out to Grand Junction and she can, you know, she can find another home for it if she doesn't want to give it to us. I don't know. But then it also gives her.
Well, it's been two months since the last email chain. I don't know about Lori's last contact, but maybe things have calmed down in two months. I don't know.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, maybe she's gotten more clarity about the direction she wants to go. Sometimes it takes time.
Yeah. Okay, are we ready to?
Yeah, I think it's worth one more try. Just to, before we close it.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to hear, okay, it's done. Or, okay. Maybe we can make it happen. This, this year or next, I don't know.
I mean, I, I agree. I certainly don't think we walk away until we understand what the differences are.
Are we broke down?
Yeah, yeah. And try to resolve them. And if they're not resolvable, then at least we knew that we didn't leave anything on the table.
And she might be shopping other towns, you know? And whatever, we do need to just contact, make an inquiry, and then be done, one way or the other.
Yeah.
Got to move on.
Got to move on.
More sculptures out there.
Saying or not.
It's true to its name, that's for sure. So up next, we have the pool sculpture. I'm going to kick it over to Lesha.
All right, and we haven't talked about this before, have we, in the meeting? Okay, great segue. So we have an opportunity for another piece of public art. I am acquainted with Gail Falwell, who is a local resident and sculptor. She's pretty well-known. She has public art outside of the Denver Art Museum. She has one in the Art Museum. She just did the installation in Basalt, the one over by Free Range. She started out her career specializing in sports sculptures. She has the big skier in Vail at the base. I don't know, I don't know Vail, so. But anyway, so she said, hey, Lesha, I, I, I do swimmers. And I thought that a swim sculpture would look awesome at the pool, in our new community pool. So through working with Lori and Parks and Rec, our first step was to see if there was any interest in this sculpture because we have already used our one percent for the brick art light installation at the pool. Parks and Rec thought it was a fabulous sculpture. It would really be quite a really great sculpture to have in town by such a renowned artist. Gail Falwell.
So does she have a swimmer sculpture or she just sent a draft?
So she has, she does a series of eight. So she's done four out of the eight, so she has the form, but she would have to cast it. So she's.
Did in what?
Bronze.
Okay.
In bronze, yes. So we met last Thursday at the pool with the team, with the architect, with Eric Brentlinger from Parks and Rec, Lori and Gail. And we kind of walked through to see if there's even a spot for the sculpture. And we did identify, she hangs them. I'm sorry, I don't have a picture of it, but she hangs them as well as mounts them on blocks. It's not that one, but it's nine feet long. It's, it's, it's a person, it's an androgynous, it's, you can't tell if it's male or female, doing the breaststroke. So anyway, so there's interest by Parks and Rec. There's a spot for it. They're going to put it into their design. And when it's appropriate, Gail is donating her time towards the sculpture. And so we would get it just based on less her time and try to acquire this sculpture that we can place at the pool.
That's pretty gracious of her to donate her time.
We would look for a donor. We could, we, thousands.
More than what's in our one percent.
Most of them look like bronze.
Yep.
Yes, they're all bronze, so. You know, at this point, we're, we're not, because, because the pool is not fully funded yet, we're not going to be aggressive with seeking a donor at this time. We're going to let the progression in the pool be completed, and then we'll put together a package to see if we can find a donor. And at that time, I'd like to present it to the board and make sure everybody's on board with the idea. Because we may end up using some of our one percent for installation if we can't get that funded. This is more of a heads up that this is a great opportunity that came our way. And it would be a fabulous addition to our collection here in town by a very renowned artist.
And she, how, do you know how long she's been in the valley for? Because I feel like she's been around.
Well, probably five or six years. She moved up from Boulder.
Okay.
So. So. So, yeah, so that's, that's kind of the, um, just an update and something that we can work as a project on next year.
Yeah, and I think too, also with trying to be with the pool project is, it's not something that we have to have as like a part of a great unveiling at the grand opening. It can be an addition later on.
Totally.
So I think it's definitely worth keeping in the back of our minds and also knowing that we might have to, if we can't find a private donor, using some of that one percent fund.
It would just be helpful for me to know, what's the price range of her work?
In the hundreds.
Hundred thousand?
Yeah, but that's not what we're going for.
Life-size bronze, that's, that's a lot of bronze.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's four of these swimmers out there in various public locations throughout the US right now.
Gives us an idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a big donor.
Yes, we do.
Yes, for sure. All right. Closing out, the pool sculpture, moving into marketing. So Julie, can I pass it off to you? I started with the current show, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, and then we can go to the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven.
So attached on page three is a summary of kind of some of the ideas I had for data capture for the permanent sculptures and the Art Around Town temporary sculptures. The temporary sculptures, and as we think about, we already have them out there right now. But going forward, when we update for Cafe going out this year, make sure that we include all the different items under information to capture in Cafe, for Cafe. And then once we do select the art that will come into the show and the artist is accepted and we know they're coming, then either I would, we would as the marketing team, or all of the board members would pick a couple of artists and reach out and gather some more information about the artist prior to the install, such that we would have some good information to write a script for the art walk. I think Brian did an amazing job putting the script together last year. But I think if we are able to get it done ahead of time, that makes it a little bit easier for us and not having to say, Brian, can you do that again? And then we would have information to market the sculptures through social media. Maybe, I'll, I don't, I got this on a field trip last week, but maybe doing something like this in the Soper Sun ahead of or after the art walk. So I don't know if you all have some other ideas of information that we might want to capture in Cafe or additional things you might want to ask the artist as we interview them after we've selected them. But these were just the ideas that I came up with that might be fun to help us have an easy narrative talk. And then the other thing, although it's not really on the agenda, but one of the things that might be fun longer term, particularly for the permanent sculptures, is to take the same idea and the same kind of information and gather it for those permanent ones if it's available. We don't know when all data is available when something's been donated a while. But to come up with a audio walking tour of those permanent sculptures. I don't know that you would want to put the, the time, talent or money into doing an audio tour of temporary ones. But for the permanent ones, I think it could be a really nice addition to this asset that we have for the town. The other day, Lesha and I actually took a, a self-guided audio tour of the historical houses in Carbondale. Now, it's a very different kind of information that they're sharing. It's more architectural, more historical, who lived in the house. And we would have other information that would be shareable on these permanent ones. But that's something that's really more down the, down the line that I've been thinking about. And it looks like there's some good options as to how we might be able to do an audio tour, including through a nonprofit that puts it out there for history. So. But the first thing is to think about as we're going into the Cafe post, what additional information, if any, we might like to add to what Lori puts out in Cafe to get stuff on the front end, you know? I think the more we can put on the front end from artists, the better. I don't know that we would want to ask them for nine million things just through Cafe.
Right.
Because you, they would have more buying and more approachability if they'd been selected. So that's why I separated those out. So we would only capture it on that side. And the other thing that, that Lori's asked for in Cafe and doesn't always receive is some good quality photos of the art. And so it's kind of this push-me-pull-you when you think about racing to get the photos during the install and then racing to get the little printout done before the walk, which is like a, like a half-day turnaround, which is kind of crazy. So we may want to rethink when we publish that card such that we can get really good quality photos.
Can I jump in here, Julie? Can I jump in here?
Absolutely.
Um, so page four and five of this packet is the twenty-twenty-six draft for our Art Around Town. So Lori has made a couple edits to it already. One specifically is asking for high-res images during the submittal process to help with that card and helping with that turnaround. We also asked for a brief artist statement of the sculpture needs to be submitted. That was kind of one of the items that we were trying to get at where we didn't want to bombard them with a list of, oh, we want, what inspired you? What's your credentials? What's your ISL? Julie had proudest art moment. I think that that is nitty-gritty that needs to come afterwards, like you were saying. And then in this timeline, I do have this that Lori sent through. So I'm just going to list off the dates for you. So the Cafe public release happens November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, so, in a week or so. The Cafe deadline to submit entry, February tenth. Notifications to selected artists, March sixth. Contracts due, March twenty-seventh. Install dates, May eighteenth through June third. Artist reception, June fourth, and then the removal is the following year. And so with that, I want to make sure that we're all in agreement that the Cafe post as is this draft minus the dates is okay so that Julie can do that in the next week or so. And if there's any edits we want to make, I should say it now.
You mean Lori can do that?
Yes, sorry. Lori can do that.
I know I've looked at this before and I think it's good as is. It has, I think, all the information needed for submission.
Perfect. Great. Yeah, I've also already looked at it too, so.
Is, um, do we need to give them a heads up that accepted artists will be expected to give a, you know, so-and-so, like, just a few? I mean, I know we don't want to ask for all of that info here alongside the submission, but is it prudent to say, you know, to have our ducks in a row? And like, this is, this is what we will ask for afterwards so that we don't feel like we're limiting that maybe after the fact because we're suddenly feeling like it's imposing? Or, or is it fine to just chat about it and do that later?
I would just call them up after and say, yes, congratulations.
Here's what, here's what. This is what we need. Yeah, maybe, maybe that's, yeah, maybe that's the best time to do it. That's fine.
Yeah, I think too, part of the intention is to make sure that the artist, in that kind of interview, Google Form template, it's so that the artist knows somebody that's going to be here when they're here installing. And so that there's a little bit more of a touchstone for when they're traveling from Canada down to Carbondale. So it just kind of acts as an initial icebreaker for them to us.
So we had talked about, maybe between the board, like, everybody gets assigned a couple of the artists, that you make a connection with them. So that, that, as you mentioned, that would be the icebreaker, but also you would be their contact point when they got here, so.
To be their monster.
Exactly, exactly. And so if, you know, everybody, if we split that up amongst the board, then everybody would be involved. And, and then, I just feel like it's much more wel- welcoming for the artists that if they know somebody they can call and count on.
Dinner recommendations, you can get a coffee with them.
Right, right.
And I know that we'll need to work around people's work schedules too. Like, if they need to install only on this date, then maybe somebody else has to have that person. So we can navigate that down the road.
I have one other question, and that, just that's that, and this, maybe this is for Lori, is, is it, have, have we had folks who, who simply maybe haven't applied because it's not, would, would a five-hundred-dollar travel allowance make more sense? I feel like it's hard to go almost anywhere for two-hundred-and-fifty bucks these days. And if that's sort of the expectation, and we want people to do that, because I think the, the walk, the art walk is really is, as much as the art itself, the art walk is a really cool thing, you know? And, and we want to get artists here, that's been an issue. Is it reasonable, is it, is it something to consider to, to try to bump that up? I don't know when the last time, Lori, I don't, I have no information here. So I don't know when the, the last time that was or wasn't addressed or considered, but I, I would, I would help, help convince, you know, do my best to convince the board that, 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 that a bump in the travel allowance would be worthwhile. that, that that, that a bump in the travel allowance would be worthwhile. I can't speak for them, but I, I would certainly have no problem saying that that maybe needs to be, could reasonably be increased.
I think that would be great, if we can.
Days in is 200 bucks.
Yes.
I was going to say, Ross, that I vetted this against other towns. They would often say that they would put people up in a hotel for two nights. So if you use that kind of as, you know, as a litmus. But, and I think I spoke with Michael about this. I mean, some people like to camp, you know, maybe, but, but I would, I would agree that if you could at least put it on par with what a hotel costs.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as, as musician even now, like I kind of have a number. It's like, okay, this is, I'll kind of do it, or this is like, that seems reasonable. And I, you know, and there are times when you know, you know, it's, you know, somewhat of a community event and there's value there. But there's also like, I don't know, I think, I, these days, I think for 250 bucks, to me, that looks like, it almost seems like we're not valuing or understanding the cost of things. I could see that being a reaction. For 500 bucks to come here, enjoy our town a little bit, you know, have coffee and not feel like you've spent money to go do this thing.
And I think too, there's so many costs with transporting art too. Like if they have to rent a truck to bring their art down here or if they need an extra pair of hands to pack it up. There are, to me, it feels low also. I think that they could end up paying to come bring their art down.
So if I can ask, Lori, how many artists did we have this year?
Well, I was going to say, you know, we only have typically one or two maybe local artists. And I'm starting to feel a little squeamish about not including them in a bump. I would, if you want to do it 500, I would bump the whole honorarium to 1,500 for everyone. Because you're basically subsidizing almost everyone anyway. And then you would be excluding two, you know, a couple of local people. And honestly, sometimes they have to rent trucks to come down from Missouri Heights or, you know, it's not always a cheap deal for them either. So for me, just my perspective, I would, if you're going to bump it, it should be for everybody.
I think that makes, I mean, I, I think you could maybe even just still call it, everybody gets a, you know, it's a thousand dollar honorarium plus a 500 travel allowance that everybody gets, you know? And not, not kind of collect receipts or play, play that game. But it still feels, I feel like it feel, it, it feels, maybe it's, maybe it's playing games a little bit, but to at least sort of divide those out and just say, this is, this is how we're viewing it and.
I understand your point about we, we want you here. So we're giving you some money to make it easier for you.
And, and even for locals, congrats, you live locally. You can, you know, come stay and have a, have a night in Carbondale also.
Well, I guess Lori, does, does, I, I think we've talked about this in the past. If they're local, they don't get the 250, right?
Yeah.
So can, can we call it something else like?
Could you call it a $250?
Like appearance fee.
That's good.
Would be paid to artists for delivery, not out of town, but artists.
Or just a logistics fee?
Yeah, or just, or, or an appearance, I mean, appearance, like, like 500 bucks for travel and appearance.
There you go.
Right? I mean, you're here.
Or maybe it's a, a reception fee. We want you at the reception to, you know, to speak about your sculpture. So this is an incentive for you to sell.
Yeah, and I think, you know, put travel and whatever in there, but just, I think there's a way to write that. That makes, that makes sense and would be, would be.
Mike, I was trying to get at how much more we need to ask for it? 250 times?
15.
15?
Well, it, yeah.
Thirty-seven fifty.
That's not so much.
Do we make it an even four? What if we get a, what's it?
Uh, so.
15 times.
250 times 15.
2,500.
Yeah, 37.50, I think.
Less than 4 grand.
Yeah.
So then for going about asking for an increase in funding, do we need to, Ross, do we need to submit a memo? What do you, what does it look like?
How does it, I, it. There's not, there's not a plate, there's not a time or, I mean, I guess we would put it in the budget for Public Works, somewhere there. It's a rounding error on some levels, but worth putting in there. And I don't know when, we, we have not seen the pub, have we seen the Public Works budget yet?
You did.
Well, we have a line item for that, you know, the art commissions in the Public Works budget.
Yeah.
Did we get our 3,000 extra that we requested for marketing?
I am not, I am, I will have to look.
Yeah, I think so.
We did, okay. And it's okay to ask for another?
Always okay to ask.
That you're right about that.
But process wise, I think Lori, would you just put in a request for that?
I'll have to check with Kevin and Ross.
Okay.
Because my only thought is if we have our Cafe release date of November 17th, we might have to push that back a week to make sure that we have the funding before we submit it publicly.
Because we have to put a number in there.
Exactly. So, moving target.
So today's November 5th. And again, we don't know if this is like a trustee boat thing or if this is just somebody signs off on it or, would it be at a trustee meeting, you think?
Well, it's, it would have to be in the budget that we finally sign off on. And somewhere it would be noted that this is different than the original, additional Public Works proposal. You know, but we've seen some versions that we have and have not dug into the minutia of. I, I will talk to some folks and I think, I think that's reasonable.
Lori, do you want to push back the Cafe release date to December 1st? So that it buys you more time to resolve this?
It's fine. I mean, I can ask Kevin tomorrow if he wants to just add a note in the budget for Public Works.
Okay.
And then the trustees will see it.
And, and can I ask when the final budget is approved?
December 15th generally is the second.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything's fine.
Keep the 17th.
Thank you for that suggestion, Ross.
Yeah, that was the only thing that I looked at here that just seemed like. Maybe, maybe, maybe we'd end up with a couple more people and that's always fun.
Well, and I think that may put, I, I was going to say maybe slightly higher than some of the local towns. So a little more incentive, I don't know.
I think it's great, keeps us competitive.
Exactly.
And maybe we'll have more of the artists today too.
Yeah.
Okay. Right on time. Okay, let's request, I'm going to request a motion to adjourn.
One question, are we meeting in November?
December.
December?
This is.
Oh, this is November, okay, never mind. We're meeting in December. Is it November, really?
We skipped last month, that's why.
Oh, okay. There's a lot to unpack on the marketing. You know, we could spend a whole meeting or several meetings just on that. So I guess we'll do it again in a month.
Yeah, I think so. And I think too, with the insanity cycle, moving that forward.
And then maybe we can, we'll hear something. Send a Lori or Michelle, if anyone hears anything, I don't know. Shoot out an email.
Yeah.
Okay.
So December, count on it.
We made the last motion, someone else.
I motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
Nice job. Thank you.